今天晚上有好多事情要处理
什么
员工，委员们，还有其他人吗？ 其他呢？味道
公园里面同一栋楼，集合的
没有，没有，当然没有
好，让我们开始吧 会给三分钟的时间发言为了方便 proceedings 只是提醒一下不会被 legislative council powers and privileges ordinance 382 中文那些 ordinance 下不会有保护或特权第一个先生是 Mr. Chow 早上好，主席 早上好，Mr. Chow 计划部门，早上好 我来这里谈论 Northeast NT 发展当你启动了 NT 北东发展你谈了这些方面这个 Northeast NT 发展到底是什么意思？ Mr. Mac Chai Kwong 告诉我们四千英亩土地两千是 residential 的 秘书部，Mr. Paul Chan 说我希望理事会给我们一个 definitive 回答据 census 和 statistics 部门说，2030 年 人口会达到8.4 亿 census 和 statistics 告诉我们 会在2040 或41年大部分都是 immigrants 议会是否考虑这些变化？ 我希望国会告诉议员们我们有 soy sauce 厂厂，纺织业 陈雪燕 早上好，主席和议员们 空气质量很好 每天早上我们都会呼吸新鲜空气，很 refreshing 在2008年 政府进行了 sham 访问他们带来了 mission， division 与计划的完整性我认为政府有预先的想法有 我的意思是，访问只是 侯华主席和议员们我是香港居民我是 non-indigenous 村民在 NT 我有 primary education 香港的确很小我以前住在 Kowloon Bay 两年之前，政府讨论了 Northeast NT 香港和深圳的融合 现在他们改变了标签，他们说 这个发展公共住房想要持续十年所以我们得等十年之前我们得到住房我们不知道会发生什么人们揭露了如 developers 存积土地的方式政府和 developers 存积土地和土地价格这里和那里 800 英亩的 10% 会是公共住房 90% 会是豪华的， luxurious 的 property 我们能做什么？ 在2003 年，库通发展 在2008 年，政府又讨论发展 他们说没有与香港联系会有机会申请来香港这将是他们的地方所以我坚决反对这个 Northeast NT 发展 我妻子，一个村民 说我们可以给人类诞生但我们不能给土地诞生 好，陈玉兰 早上好我不知道怎么向你介绍因为我看不到你的名字标签我是库通的村民 以前，年轻市民会来这家医院做 consultation 它三天开放我们有 old folks homes 幼儿园， primary school 我在库通教育过在如此美好的环境中现在你会继续这片土地这将被继续 政府在做什么？你在进行什么 consultation？ 我的意思是，这不是笔记本 这是一个非常漂亮的打印 consultation document 你听到了我们的声音吗？ 你需要取消 API 我对这个 API 没有了解也事务部秘书们 他们在哪里？ 他们第一次出现他们再次出现为了第二次我希望他们可以联系社区看为什么 officials 要联系人们谢谢陈龙昌平我旁边是我的妈妈我重申我们的立场 我们不想清除，我们不想腐朽的项目 现在当我们谈到实际的英亩土地时政府说会有技术调整但是他们说这不能使用香港面临老龄 population 政府在改变政策以满足老年人的需要有很多 old folks homes 在附近如果你把 Northeast NT 挖下来 他们会去哪里？除非你摆脱他们 他们从没有依靠政府他们从来没有点头他们从来没有请求任何给予 他们有土地，他们参与种植 为什么你要拆毁他们的 property？ 现在，这些村庄不是 indigenous 村所以这个 planning 很令人惊叹 API 也这还在 consultation 状态你告诉了整个香港有这样一个新城市 在哪里？什么时候？ 没有在 indigenous 村上进行 consultation 只有委员会 你是在做什么？ 你告诉我们，2月13日 你必须搬出去，你必须离开 请更具体一点 2012 年1月15日
我爸爸带我来这条村我们有一个很好的家我们可能住在一个小木屋创造这个家给我们我们出生和长大在库通村我们是所以这是一个宝贵的地点它是由我父亲创造的 我不会移动，谢谢 接着，陈头凤仪 早上好我在库通生活了很多年自我祖父的第二代开始我们不想移动 Paul Chan 说 NENT 项目是解决香港人民住房需求大部分的人在 PRH 公共住房中等待但你只保留了一片土地给 PRH 剩下的土地，你提议建 luxury housing 你觉得我们缺少 luxury housing？ 你必须去社区看看这些 luxury housing 不由香港人民承受所以对于普通香港人他不能承受这样的住房 有多少人愿意接受？ 为什么在这些情况下 请考虑你真的应该前进吗？ 谢谢陈国威 主席， permanent secretary, lawmakers, deputies and individuals 他们在那里培养家庭 当他们年轻的时候，他们在库通的 primary school 学习他们毕业后在库通工作我们在一个小地方生活我的孩子长大了他们应该结婚但是因为低收入但他们不适合住房 价格是8,000-9,000 美元 购房费增加到10,000 美元所以它发布了我购买的房子计划它不是在低处 价格大约3 亿美元所以年轻人们结婚常常和父母在一起与 NENT 项目 我们应该做什么？ 更多的10,000 人会直接因为这个项目受影响 22 月22 日一场 consultation 会议举行居民问 Paul Chan，发展部长 香港会结束吗？ 当然不会因为我们那里有很好的生活所以请我们安静上周接着四代人都在那里生活但是随着这个提议 我们应该做什么？ 我没有高等教育背景仍然支持我的家庭 你的项目，你要求我们重新住房 只有老人在那附近 我们应该做什么？ 我们只是要求你让我们让我们住在我们的家我们不是 indigenous 村 不像他们，不是 indigenous 村请不要让我们孤独只做两次或三次 consultation 就够了，你挖掘我们的村庄 我们不知道我们应该做什么因为我不能阻止你你有大高尔夫球场但是你没有利用它你提议在那建 luxury housing 谁能够承受？ 谁能够承受？ 即使我们可以在这里生活我们不能管理管理费用我们不能承受 这是我要说的，谢谢 我认为有些 individuals 和 deputies 来晚了所以他们被邀请 later 讲话陈凯我是 illiterate 现在你想继续库通你想摧毁我们的家但我喜欢这个地方我从 scratch 建东西 我老了，我已经退休了 我只是养动物，鱼 我不想你打扰我们不打扰我们的社区即使你提议重新住房给 PRH 我不喜欢不摧毁我们的家 接着，谢赛 这是遗憾第二很多乡村书记代表从委员会我们只有 lawmakers We only have lawmakers from the Democratic camp here. Whereas for those who are directly involved in village matters are not here to listen to deputations. I'm from the League of Rural Government Coalition Monitor. We set up this group because for anti-development, usually the interests of indigenous people are involved. Representatives of the villagers stand to gain. Through many channels, they can get lots of information and they can engage in bargain with the government to maximize their interest or profit. Whereas for indigenous and non-indigenous residents are betrayed because of the collusion between government and the village representatives. Some, for some developments, Feng Shui were thought to be affected. That's why they would ask for compensation in this particular area. Sometimes they would set up companies with their relatives, asking for compensation. Now, on the face of it, it seems that everything is open. But you can imagine if someone is not part of the village, one would not be involved in this. Now, coming back to N E N T development. I can see there is collusion between government and village heads, particularly those with special privileges in the village. We can tell that from the consultation. For the several consultations, village heads and Rural Committee representatives, district councillors in the N T. These are the people who were involved in the consultation. They only consulted these people. Another group consulted was the landowners, who are more or less the same people. Now, many did not know about the consultation. That's exactly because of the problems I just told you, which is related to interest and land. Direction of development or the alignment, for example, just of Liang Tang, we had lots of alignment or proposal. In fact, if you moved the alignment towards one side for a bit, then some villagers would not have to be moved. Mr. Shi, I'm sorry, time is up for you. Well, I think I should have more time because many deputations have not used up the time limit. Next, we have Mr. Leng Wei Tong. Permanent Secretary, Lawmakers, Chairman. Good morning. I am the owner of Greenwich Organic Farm. I am also representing over seventy farmers who got the certificate of organic farming. You only get the certificate if your farmland is certified to be not polluted. The government is taking the lead in ruining the ecology of Hong Kong in giving the green light to N E N T project. Different industries in Hong Kong should be given room for development. Farming cannot be separated from human lives. Organic farming should not be carried out outside Hong Kong only. Farming actually offers different job opportunities, job choices, and diversified development in Hong Kong. It has many functions. It provides us with food, gives us education, job opportunities, and even opportunities for rehabilitation. Hong Kong people very much like to have fresh and safe organic vegetables or food. They should be given such choice. Hong Kong people need fresh, organic food. We're not just taught, we don't, we should not simply rely on vitamins pills to keep us healthy. Farming is about succession. It's a kind of survival skill passed on by previous generations. We should not deprive people of the chance to basic living. Basic life depends on farming. Farming development needs government's assistance in terms of policy. So I urge the administration to develop sustainable farming policy. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next speaker. We have R I C S, Mr. Kwan from Royal Institution of Chartered Surveyors. Good morning. I'm representing the R I C S. We give our in principle support to N E N T because Hong Kong needs land for residential development. Now, property price is extremely high with limited space for development. We cannot have a reasonable supply of land. That's why we give you our support in the development. But we would like to urge the government to consider whether the plan has public consensus. Should the majority submits to the minority or should the minority submits to the majority? If you have broad consensus, yes, you should go ahead with the N E N T development. And in that case, you have to make good use of the land after resumption. We know you have to pay a high price in land resumption. And many people's homes will be sacrificed. So the administration should think about using the land for recreational activities and industrial activities. You should strike a balance between these developments and the interests of those whose homes are demolished. So first of all, you have to make sure, you have to see whether the plan is supported by a consensus. Apart from that, now you do need lots of resources to have extensive land resumption. You may have to pay our compensation. So in our paper, we propose the letters A and B, which you used in the past. So we propose that to you, that you may also like to make use of letters A and B. Once again, in terms of compensation. Now, some developers have already got some land there. It's not a bad thing for them to get involved because they are flexible. You can get the details from our paper, so I'm not going to repeat what's stated.
Next, Ms. Lau Yuen Yee. Thank you, Chairman. In the consultation document, it is said clearly that the guiding principle is sustainable living environment. But in the paper, it doesn't include the part on farming. In the proposal, the farm, large tracts of farmland will be lost and that runs against the principle of sustainable living environment. People think that Hong Kong is a city, is not suitable for farming, farming land. And one of the different cities have provided for their own vegetables, thirty percent in Beijing, fifty percent in Shanghai, sixty-eight percent in Wuhan. And for Singapore, they have this indicator of ten percent of vegetables produced on their own in Hong Kong. However, we produce two point three percent of the vegetables for our own need. Some people say that if you've got money, then you can buy food. But then food supply worldwide is becoming in short supply and the price is going to rise. And that's something that's already known to everyone. Of course, if you have the money, you have rich people can buy the food. Those who are going to suffer are the poor. The, the, um, the food on, the expenditure on food takes up forty to fifty percent of a household's income. If we don't produce our own food, then a short supply in the short term, a food supply in the short term will affect the prices and those most affected are the low-income households. Now, we can't rely a hundred percent on food produced on our own, but we have the responsibility not to rely too much on other places. The more we produce, the better we will be. Now, every city wants to have a stable, stable food supply and Hong Kong is no exception. Farming is also an economic activity. It carries a lot of tangible and intangible benefits. For example, reducing the cushion, shoving as a cushion on food prices and will also create job opportunities in many sectors. And it will also be an ecological corridor and preserve the, um, the landscape of the village and and satisfy the needs of people for sustainable living. Obviously, farming is related to education, transport, and they are public resources. And we, we shouldn't measure their value by economic terms alone. So Hong Kong needs farming. Farming needs government policy and support. Now, in the N T As, a lot of the farmland has laid idle and the hygiene conditions are bad and the landscape in the village has been adversely affected. Hong Kong has scarce land resources and we shouldn't waste our land like that. We hope that the government can resort to all sorts of measures to make sure that the land is rented out for farming activities. We hope that the government can uphold the value of farming land in Hong Kong and draw up a comprehensive farming policy that so that we would not, we have a zero loss of our farming land. And Hong Kong can become, become a green living city. Next, Mr. Kong Chung Ai. I want to raise a couple of questions. First, on the Fourth of July, Mr. Ma Chai Kwong, the then Development Secretary. We have nine hundred and fifty-two hectares of land for comprehensive residential development. But in October, Mr. Paul Chan said so there is only three hundred and ninety-one hectares of residential land. How come the difference, such a big gap? Mr. Ma Chai Kwong was a former Development Secretary and Mr. Paul Chan is the existing incumbent secretary. We've got three hundred and ninety-one hectares of land. I think that a lot of houses can be built on that, on that. Why do we still have to demolish the homes of N E N T people and take away their farmland? Second, in N E N T, in the consultation document for the third P E exercise, it says that development is for the promoting the economic and social development of Shenzhen and Hong Kong. And Mr. Paul Chan said in the consultation forum that N E N T development plan will assist in promoting the integration of the P R D and Hong Kong. And then now the plan has been, has been turned into a new town development plan. So it seems that the goals of the development are changing one day after another. And why do we have to press ahead with it in that case? And now we have this A P I on this N E N T development plan and you are making changes on the title. It's the same as the reasons given by Mr. Leng Chan Ying for his U B Ws. So so isn't that a waste of money with all these changing goals? And you're still consulting, but then you are taking out this A P I which doesn't, shouldn't represent the ultimate decision of the government and it may be a waste of the public funds. Well, that's the end of what I want to say. Mr. Next one, Mr. Tofeng Dominic To. Chairman, Members. Good morning. I'm from Catholic Sustainable Garden of Joy. We support the development plan for villages such as the development for N E N T. But we should have a plan for development in many areas of N T. The land is used for container, truck, park, car park logs. So the development plan should not be adopting old principles and using the motto adopted for shopping arcades development. In fact, shopping arcades all over Hong Kong like Shatin are the same in their design. It's just that the, the class of goods they offer are different. And the design of the N E N T seems very beautiful. It's luxuriously designed shopping arcades, luxury housing. It's, it's the same motto as these shopping places in the urban areas. We hope that the development of N T districts should go by the principle of simplicity and greening. It should represent the integration of nature and human agriculture, providing a fresh and healthy food and fruits and vegetables to create jobs and promoting the community exchange, exchanges of goods. We don't want the so-called very cold supermarkets to intrude into our community. We hope that the small operators, small groceries and schools like, or, or, or small operations like soy sauce factories can, can be established there. Well, you've already got that. Is that right? So that's why we have to preserve them. I fully support that. This, these are our partners. What kind of life do we want to lead? Our urban style of living or rather a low-carbon style of living? So in the N E N T development, this can provide a good opportunity for Hong Kong to develop into a diversified society. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you and Happy New Year. Thank you very much. Mr. Chang Hoi Kam, replacing Mr. Chen Yao. Sorry, I came late, so I might have not enough time to speak, but anyway, I wanted to supplement Mr. Tam Hoipong's suggestion on the golf course. The government said that the N E N T development is a housing project. When I was eleven, twelve years old, the golf course was still there and I was participating in, playing a part in that golf, golf course. And the enrollment fee is twelve million dollars and the supply force, far short of demand and people wishing to enroll have to wait for twelve years. And this golf course is heavily subsidized by the government. And this golf course is, belongs to this other golf club. And apart from this Fanning Golf Course, they have another golf course in Shenzhen. They, the golf course occupies a hundred and seventy hectares of land. They've got this palace-like clubhouse. They have several courses. They have got three international stand, eighteen hole, independent golf courses in there. So on average, each golf course in the entire course takes up over fifty hectares of land and they operate independently. And they have got this training courses and so on. So this is a very big and profitable business. And Tam Hoipong from the Green Group said that that the housing project planned will replace a golf course. My suggestion is this, if the government can say to the, the golf association that you can just let us you can just let us use one of the four golf courses, we still we will have fifty hectares of land. I we don't want all of your space. And if we've got fifty hectares of land, that will be able to satisfy the housing needs planned for the NE NT development plan. And we don't have to deal with all these troubles we are facing now. And the Permanent Secretary last week said that the golf course is now in use without good transport links and so on. These are excuses that he used last week. It seems that the people, the villages in the northeast three districts, it seems that the the living there is doesn't deserve to be continued. If one of the three golf courses can be given over to the government, then it would be good. We we don't think that it's more important to allow the rich people to play an extra game of golf than allowing people in the NT to continue with their way of living. Mister Chow has also another said another told and also lie. And all the Ku Tong people will be linked to the Shangshou Station because the golf course is nearer than the Shangshou MTR station. Then building a housing, public housing there would be a win-win-win, a four-win situation for everyone. So I hope that the the NE NT plan be shelved. Thank you, deputations, for your comments. I would like to remind you that please write your name on your written speeches and hand them over to the secretariat so that we can have a fuller understanding of your views. Now, I'm going to ask members to raise questions. Perhaps I would suggest three minutes each for members. And if we wish the administration to respond, that would also be included in the three minutes. So please be brief. Two members have said that they would like to speak. First, Miss Emily Lau.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for everyone for coming to give views to us. Last week, on Saturday, we heard also the views from a lot of members of the public. We're continuing to listen today. Most of the members of the public have very clear views and they object to the present proposal. And in October, I represented the Democratic Party to request the government to shelf the plan. That was not successful because it met with the objection from some members. But if the administration wanted to force through the plan, it would trigger a lot of problems and it would create a lot of conflicts in the community.
Chairman, I want to ask the Permanent Secretary for on several questions. Miss Cheyok Lan said that the CE said that the political appointees in the government should go down to the districts. So can the Permanent Secretary tell me how many times the the Development Secretary has gone down to the districts and what kind of views has he heard? And the we also know that the non-indigenous residents are driven away from their homes. And the Permanent Secretary said that he doesn't want to see such things happening and they he urged the property developers not to sort of persecute these people. What have you done to help them? Permanent Secretary, please. On the NE NT project, I know that the secretary has actually gone down and visited the districts. Is not I'm not at liberty to respond to the times of visits made because I'm not responsible for his itinerarys. Well, you you are not responsible for his itinerarys, but it's but it seems that you have the knowledge of the number of visits. But can you tell us the number of visits and where he visited? Is that possible? I don't take charge of his schedule and I didn't accompany him to go down to the visits. Perhaps I can supplement the information later. Please give us such information later. Please respond to my next question. Generally, once the plan is confirmed, we would have to conduct a study on freezing the land. At the present stage, we are still in a planning stage. We haven't really confirmed the plan yet. So so it's too early to give details of our arrangement. Do you know how many people have been driven away from their homes? Chairman, we don't have the figures. Permanent Secretary, can't you do something to find out the figures? You are not really people oriented and and you don't know how many people have been forced away from their homes and you don't seem to care too much. How well, what can we we say to to these people if that's the attitude you are adopting? Mister Leng Kwak Hong. I asked him, the Permanent Secretary, about the eight to two ratio. He said that he would think about it. And a friend just now talked about the golf course. Could you consider that together with this ratio? When I took the cross tunnel buses, I saw all these advertisements about golf clubs. The officials might be playing golf over the weekends, accompanying the government, the Chinese officials to play golf over the weekend. Permanent Secretary, have you ever played golf in that golf course? Have you done that? Please respond. Well, if he knows where the place is and then I don't have to follow up. Have you ever barbecued in the in the then governor's residence in Fanning? Well, please ask all your questions first. If you are talking people oriented policies, that you should suffer first and then you sort of have enjoyment later on. So that's a kind of a thinking of the Lu Feng motto upheld by the Chinese government. But now you're doing it the other way around. You're enjoying yourselves and not suffering. So my question is this, do you plan to do something to the golf course? And if you I really can sort of do something to the golf course, I will take the responsibility of convincing the people in NE NT to accept your plan. What kind of government is this? Now, you've got this large tract of land and only a few rich people are having this village representative government collusion. The the government is giving them all these medals to this village heads and and you are we are seeing a collusion between the government and the village heads and the business now. If go back and you tell Mister Leng Chan Ying, if you are going to relocate the golf course and the the villa of Mister Leng Chan Ying in the NT, then I would take charge of convincing the local residents to accept your proposal. Are you bold enough to do that? Well, your time's up, Mister Leng, Permanent Secretary. Well, we will record any types of opinions expressed and we will consider them. Mister Raymond Chan, next. So I would like to follow up on the golf course. In the last consultation session, the deputations have raised this. At first, the Permanent Secretary said that it's not possible because the lease has not expired. But then we found that we all we need is one year's notice and we can relocate them. Then there are several different other sayings later on. Now, if we study the project from scratch now and then we may have to wait a long time before the problem can be addressed. So we might have a some confusion here. So can the Permanent Secretary tell us what the administration can do about the golf course? What is your basic attitude?
Well, as we said all along, would take quite a bit of time to study the golf course, the NT Northeast Development. We have been we have been studying this for quite some time now. The golf course is not served by mass carrier, but we have made provision for the Ku Tong development. The golf course, it is not a substitute model for the NE NT development. Mister Chen. Shall we allow the deputations to make their point regarding the golf course? Right, the one at the back. You have the ten year plan, but we've been there for a few for about a century. In Ku Tong, one is facing north, one is facing Shangshui. The for the Fanning Golf Course, we're not asking for the entire golf course. We're asking for a bit of it, which like a liver, they can be excised for donation to save life. It is an ideal location for public housing. It's ideally suited. The distance is good enough. It can be accessible to bicycles. I think in terms of transport, I don't think there are any problems at all. You talk about the the land lease until certain year. I I think it would take one year's notification. They have so many golf courses in Hong Kong, this is only one of them. And this is massive, there are three in one. All you need to do is to excise one third and the housing problem can be resolved. Doctor Fernando Jung.
Chairman, thank you. Thank you very much, villagers, for joining us. We understand how difficult the situation is. We are eager to hold this project. But those in power and those tycoons who are coveting this piece of land will not let go of it. There's not a question for the Permanent Secretary. I've got a question for the Planning Department. Now, Mister Tam, last time, Mister Jung, this time, mentioned the Fanning Golf Course. Miss Amy Jung, our Town Planner. Is it possible in terms of town planning to turn the golf course into a residential area and provide sufficient number of units to house the one hundred and fifty thousand people? This is a technical question for the Planning Department. Miss Amy Jung.
Chairman, thank you. If we have to study whether this place is suitable for new town development, we have to consider a whole host of factors, environment, infrastructure, transport link and so on before we can carry out a comprehensive planning.
Mister Jung, so technically it is feasible, isn't it? Mister Jung. It's hard to say because we haven't quite conducted such studies. Mister Jung. Chairman. Now, the Town Planners do have their own code of practice according to their code. Now, for the question of urban rural planning, the registered Town Planner should provide all the understanding to their employers about the public interests. So the Town Planners will have to reflect to the employer, in this case, the government, all the elements of public interests. So the government Town Planners, in the context of this NE NT development, have they fulfilled the obligation to reflect the public interests? Miss Jung.
In the course of planning, we do have to follow established procedures. We have to carry out the the planning, the survey, and together with government departments, we do conduct in-depth analysis. In the process, we did conduct public engagement exercises. Other than reflecting the findings to the to the government and the departments, we have also released the information to the members of the public.
Doctor Kenny Chen. Chairman, once again, my thanks to all the villagers and members of the public for being with us. I think what's important is for the government to admit that they have done a bad job. When I when I joined the discussion at the panel for the first time, I asked a question by consultation. The government was chuffed about what they did. Now, if they have done a good job, why do we see a situation like we do today and last week? As councilors, we rely very much on the government documents. Luckily, this council has not been counted into submission. We managed to invite deputations to hear their their views straight from the horse's mouth. If a government official has some conscience, he should tell us that he has done a bad job in terms of consultation. You don't have to worry about it. It's not about face. This is public administration. This is the minimum requirement of public administration. If you've done a bad job, do it again. You're not going to retract this. You're not going to make any modifications. I think all you do is to save your face. The chief executive, your boss, has listened to so many comments and he should be fairly coming out and saying that they've done a bad job. Education is one of the six key industries in Hong Kong. We have a couple plots of land in the NT and they are taking back the land and they're not building under private schools. If it is well justified, if it is well understood by the public, why is it that it cannot be changed? The education sector, we learned from newspapers that a few plots of land will be taken off the list and there will be no more private schools to be built. I think if the government is really for the sake of face saving, steadfastly refuse to admit wrongdoing, then we can't let you let you off the hook. They've been there for a few generations. They're going to be removed from the site. Now, there was some comment about whether we're in a minority or whether we're in a majority. Are the golf course users in the majority or are the people here in the majority? I think the answer is plain for everybody. If the development means that these people are going to see their life wrecked, should we really consider the golf course?
All right. I think we have we're done with the first round from for members. There are members who indicate indicated their intention for the second round. Emily Lau, Leng Kwak Hong for the second round. Any other members would like to have a second go at this? Right, if you have time, Chairman, we can invite those who didn't quite have the opportunity to speak. Miss Emily Lau, three minutes, please.
Ms. Emily Lau, three minutes, please.
Chairman, thank you. I hope that the Permanent Secretary would go back and have a look as to how many have been forcibly evicted, those who cannot be helped. Now, if you disseminate the message, they would be happy to come forward with the information. If possible, you should help them. We have been talking about the golf course. I hope that the Permanent Secretary would consider this seriously and come back with a reply. Mr. Che Seikit did have a lot to say. Now, he mentioned the collusion between the government and the rural gentry. Now, I think we do need evidence. Will this be investigated? Mr. Jay, I care to supplement?
Now, there were problems with the consultation. I don't want to belabor this point. Now, there in town, there were three alignments. One of them would involve the highest number of land resumptions. Will the government tell us? In relation to these three alignments, what are the costs incurred for land resumption? I think from this, we can extrapolate what the situation is like. Also, Kutong development, the V zones have been enlarged. Now, this is our observation. The Bureau and the department ought to furnish us with some information as to whether, in order to get the support of the indigenous people, they have relaxed the zoning for particular areas, and that way, they hope that they will win the support of the villages. Third, I think we have to pursue this with the administration. In the entire development, how much land compensation would be involved? And how many would see compensation because of the damage to Feng Shui? To a certain extent, compensation for Feng Shui impairment would also be included. I mean, they would conceal the compensation in this regard. In terms of railway development, we don't normally see the account for Feng Shui compensation. I think we ought to assuage our public concern by presenting this kind of information. Ms. Lau. I don't think they need to respond straight away. They must have heard what Mr. Jay said. Please come up with the information. Give us the information as to whether there is any collusion between the rural people and the government. Are they making it favorable to the indigenous people and so on? Mr. Leng Kwok Hong. A question for the town planner. The planner said that for this to be considered, a whole host of factors would have to be taken into account, and it would take an awful long time. And the NE NT project is all set to go ahead. Now, the Secretary for Development, has he ever asked you to rezone the golf courses? If they are turned into residential or public housing? What about the fundamental infrastructure, the transport, and so on? Did he at any stage ask you to look at this possibility? Ms. Zheng.
Now, we, when we zone land in Hong Kong, we do have the overall planning, and we do conduct, we have the 2013 planning study. I understand you have this study. You don't have to defend your boss. Has he ever asked you to consider rezoning the 150 hectares of land? If 50 hectares were to be taken out of it, were you instructed to look into the implications? And also the distance between this and the Shengshui station? Were you at any point asked to study this? 2013 includes this, doesn't it? Ms. Zheng. Whether rezoning of the Hong Kong Golf Course? I haven't received that instruction. Right, it will be renewed year by year. So you haven't received the instruction. Permanent Secretary, what are you talking about?
Since the year 2000, since Xi Jinping's era, it was halted in 2003, and then in 2007, '08, '09. There was no study on this. How can you lay the blame on the professionals? Can they carry out this study themselves? You are deferring the question to your colleague next to you. You're falling down on your job. Now, Mac Chai Kwong and Carrie Lam, did they ask you to rezone the 150 hectares of land? If not, then I hope that you would carry out the rezoning. Yes or no? If not, why can't they not be rezoned? Why is it that in 2000, they could change the plan, and you start reactivating it in 2007? And we're talking about unification between Hong Kong and Shenzhen. Now, this is a piece of land measuring 150 hectares. Why is it that 50 hectares cannot be excised of it? And you are cheating us by saying that there would be too much trouble. Permanent Secretary. Right, the golf course, as I said, is not a substitute model. Not substitute model. This is in tandem. Are you going to do it? This will proceed in tandem. All right, members. I think all the members for the second round have put in their questions. Are there more members would like to put questions? I think we leave the floor to the deputations. All right, we still have a bit of time. The deputations today. Do you want to take the floor and speak? Raise your hand, please. Four. All right, let me do it like this. I give you three minutes each. The first one is Mr. Ho Wah. Chairman, if I may respond to the Permanent Secretary about the transport link between the playground and Kutong. Now, in your plan of where the public housing is, how far is it away from the Kutong Station? Fifteen-minute walking distance, is it considered too far away? My home is facing Kutong Station. I mean, it would take 15 minutes from Kutong to this station. It would take 15 minutes to walk from Kutong to the golf course center. They have two choices, but we are only given one choice. But still, it is 15-minute walking distance. Is it considered far? If it is too far, then I think you have to rezone and move the public housing closer to the Kutong Station. Second, in the indigenous villages, some chairman would like to work with the administration that's selling their own ancestral horse. And they're so generous. And they're so kind to the government. Why don't you talk to them and leave us alone? Those who don't want to leave. We've been having a lot of meetings, and many villages have indicated their stance. They don't want any removal or any clearance. Those who conform to the government's plan, you're not talking to them. And they're presenting themselves to you, and you can't be bothered. I mean, and you're really moving us away. Are you riding roughshod over us, wanting to talk to them? There are 700 villages, and there would be more than 800 hectares. You are developing this area. You're going to have 150,000 units. I mean, if you turn this all into public housing, there may be 300,000 units. But in the future, there will be more than 1 billion people coming to Hong Kong. Who will you accommodate them in your home? There would be so many people coming down every single year. Shouldn't you handle the population policy better? There are so many people coming down from up north, and you're always running out of land. If you run out of land, you're going to reclaim the Victoria Harbour? Or are you going to buy out the Lingting Island from the CPG? We run out of land, even if we surrender the land with the sheer number of people coming down from north, the women with no connection to Hong Kong, or the rest of the people. There's so many people descending upon Hong Kong.
Hi, Chairman. Next, Mr. Chung Wai Kwong. I have to say to this gentleman, what you've mentioned are already existing. So you don't need this development. Please come to Kutong and Ping Chee and see the existing condition for yourself. What we're asking is to keep what we have already. We're not asking for high rises. We're not asking for you to raise everything to the ground. The Census and Statistics Department have already told you that it's only by 2041 that you get 1.4 million immigrants coming to Hong Kong. What does that tell you? That means if you do a better job in terms of population policy, things will be better. At present, local population is falling. So, under these circumstances, how come you are still proposing to have development? That's why local residents oppose to the plan. We don't want it because there's no such need. The government keeps saying this is for the betterment of Hong Kong, for the existing population. This lady, the chief town planner, please take a look at the waiting list. 200,000 people are waiting to be housed in public housing. Most of them are single tenant applicants. Why? They're on the list, not because of the needs of the family. You keep promoting this, talking about these surveyors here. Well, if you look at these statistics, you understand there's no such need for the development. Mr. Chow says years been spent on the development or the study. Now, the plan was stopped in 2003, and again, it was reactivated in 2007. You are cheating. You're lying to us. We have three golf courses. We're just asking for you to take one out. Please find out how long does it take for you to walk from the golf course to Shengshui Station? What's the walking distance? What's your salary? You are an official. Do you think you deserve that pay? Next, Mr. Chung Hoi Kung. Thank you, Chairman, for giving me another chance to speak. I'm from Kutong. I'm born and raised in Hong Kong. I'm also a member of the Hong Kong Institute of Engineers. Last Saturday, Professor Choi from our institute came here. And Ms. Emily Lau asked the professor, does it mean that we don't have to pay heed to the interest of the residents, and we can simply move the bulldozer to the site and have the development? The professor answered that if it's in accordance to the overriding public interest of Hong Kong, the plan should be carried out as soon as possible. I was quite worried. That's why I tried to do some, that's why I did some research. In fact, there are conditions involved. I'm not going to repeat the conditions. But to put it simply, the government should take into account all the relevant comments and views made by the public, and the views should be reflected. As for the details, the institute said that it believes the government would come up with a comprehensive plan. So it means at present, the government does not have a comprehensive study or plan. So it tells you the institute supports this plan if the government has a comprehensive study. Now, about assessment, how do you assess the overall benefit of Hong Kong people? Can the Bureau and the Planning Department tell us? How did you come up with a fair assessment? Or is it a plan led by the will of the administration? The indigenous residents stand to great gain, and the others were just talking about thousands of people being affected. Or do you think it's no big deal to give a piece of land to Shenzhen? If the government cannot clarify how it came up with the assessment, I would write to the Institute of Engineers saying that I cannot support the plan. Mr. Che Seikit. For the entire NE NT project, all I can say is we are having forced planning, forced removal, and we're being lied to. Just now, it was said that we do not have an objective assessment to come up with the definition of broad interest of Hong Kong people. How are we going to have long-term planning for our population? We do not have such planning at present. I'm not living in NE NT. Do we have any planning for the development there? With the rise in population, we need more land. And our needs are ignored under the development. Without long-term planning, the plan is not right. We think agricultural development is necessary. So, now the Planning Department says there will be plans for resuming, for rehabilitation of farming. But how much land are we talking about? And how many people are waiting to farm on the land? As far as we know, hundreds of people are waiting. So I think you do have to give us an answer about all these questions. And some deputations asked you to stop airing the API, which is really unpleasant. Last time, you said the API was there to rally more comments for consultation. But in fact, the government is now polarizing different groups with this API. The government is, in fact, suppressing the disadvantaged group. So can I ask you to stop the API? Deputational individuals who have asked to speak have already spoken, and we still have some time left. So does anyone wish to speak? Chairman, sorry, we have some questions. Um, let me just ask if anyone would like to speak. I just want to see whether there's any waiting to speak. Anyone? Please raise your hand. Two. Second round for you. Yes, I'm happy to let them speak first. Those who raised their hands now have already spoken on two occasions. Ms. Chair, what I would like to say is, I've been sitting here for a long time listening to them. The answer of the permanent secretary. Cannot address what's being asked. So please give us a clear answer to the questions asked. Mr. Chen Hui Kung. Thank you, Chairman, for giving me another chance to speak. Now, NENT affects lots of people, is of a large scope, is unprecedented in Hong Kong. For the recommended outline development plan, it was announced and this plan is worrying to the residents, why? Because in terms of planning. We can see that for the O Z P, usually the indigenous residents stand to gain. The V-zone will be enlarged for these people, the interest will be taken care of. We have limited land resources, and the land resources is allotted to these people to build their own indigenous houses. For the non-indigenous people. Our efforts spent over the past decades are all wasted because of the government's policy. The government is now proposing to raise everything to the ground, nothing will be remained. They are removing everybody, removing all the structures, just to clear the site. It is not a plan, as Mr. Chow has told you. I'm an engineer, looking at the proposal. The terms used are not pleasant. I tell the villagers, their homes, the villages will be raised down to the ground. So are you asking the villagers to give you a warm welcome, like those who have succumbed to you? You talk about rehousing, compensation, and the government will not leave them homeless. This is rubbish. Because this is not what the affected residents wishes. Several generations of their families have been there to build a home in the place. And they have contributed to Hong Kong. You cannot quantify their efforts. By giving compensation, if you still don't understand our wishes. The residents and myself will be happy to repeat it to you again and again. So I would like to propose to lawmakers. That next year, when they come to Lashco for funding approval for NENT development. I urge lawmakers to turn down the funding application. Next, Mr. Chen Chi Chun. Chairman, you said after all the questions are taken, the permanent secretary will be asked to give answer. I know he will be selective in answering the questions. I'd just like to raise the question not answered earlier on. About the detrimental impact caused by the police facilities. Because I know he will be selective in answering the questions. So I would like to ask deputations, if there are any questions you would like to raise that you are worried that the permanent secretary will not answer. Any further questions? I'm saying you throw lots of questions, I'm just worried that the permanent secretary will be selective in his answers, will not answer those. Questions he doesn't like. Well, we have to maintain order here in the council, I don't think what you're proposing is feasible. So, Mr. Chen, if you have any questions that the secretary has not answered, you can raise them. Because you still have time. All right, I've already raised my question, all right, thank you. Next, Mr. Chen Hua Kung. Thank you for giving me another chance to. State my point. Concerning this development plan, I don't think there's a need for it, I've repeated, why? Population is falling in Hong Kong. As long as you stop people, outsiders, from coming to Hong Kong. We have sufficient resources, we have a lot of land resources here. Permanent Secretary, please go to visit the areas and find out how long does it take for you to go from the golf course to the Shengshui Station? Just take one-third of the golf course. Then you will sufficiently address the population need of Hong Kong. So if your objective is to address the needs arising from population, you simply have to take a one-third of the golf course. For development, and you will not affect the golf course users because you simply take out one golf course out of three. Mr. Chow, Permanent Secretary, Mr. Chow, can you tell us whether you can do that? I'm proposing a. Plan for you to address the overall needs within a short period. From nineteen ninety eight. To two thousand three. Well, the plan started in nineteen ninety eight and stopped in two thousand three, and now you reactivated the plan again. You keep changing, so how come you cannot change? The development plan at present? Since there's no such need for development, shouldn't the whole plan be scrapped? Shouldn't consultation be scrapped because the plan is not needed anyway? Mr. Ho Wah. Thank you, Chairman. We have different clauses in Hong Kong, doesn't mean that. There's no fairness between the clauses. If yes, I have to lodge a complaint to the Equal Opportunity Commission. If there's no difference in terms of clauses, then there should not be any difference between the treatment of indigenous and non-indigenous people because we are. Equal. You keep talking about the number of people being affected. And how land can be resumed to address the urgent needs. But people can only move in twenty years later, what are we supposed to do in the interim? As for planning, are you going to have planning first or demolition first? Will you build the new Lashco building before you demolish the old ones? I'm really exhausted. In telling you my views. You build a new airport before you demolish the old ones. And for the site of the old airport, you have lots of. Public housing blocks to be built there, so how come you still ask for our land? I enjoy my life in the countryside, this is what I call a pleasant life. But you are now going to drive me away to God knows where, I'm really worried, I can't sleep.
Um, I have diseases and the doctors asked me to relax all the time. And I'm thinking several years down the road, where can I go? Because several years down the road, my home will be demolished. I've also got pets like cats and dogs, where will they go to? They are lives too. The dogs, I've kept my dogs for six to seven years, and I'm going to be made homeless with dogs and cats. Um, I cannot keep my dogs and cats if I move to the PRH. Would you keep my cats and dogs for me, please? Take care of my pets for me, can you do that, Permanent Secretary? So, please, Permanent Secretary, can you respond to the questions, thank you, Chairman? To meet long-term housing needs and long-term economic development needs. The government has strived to provide more land to address housing needs. So that. The needs of economic activities can also be met. Um, can I ask that you allow the permanent secretary to speak? Mr. Zhou. Please abide by the rules of the meeting. The permanent secretary is now trying to answer your questions, please give him some time. I hope you won't interrupt because he's now speaking. Now, if he finishes and if we have time and there is a need, then you can speak again. Please allow him to respond first. Well, but all he's talking is rubbish. Mr. Zhou, well, I'll call upon you to speak before you are allowed to speak. I am humbly requesting you to play your role properly. Now, I'm asking the permanent secretary to respond. Have, if you feel that his answer doesn't. What he speaks doesn't answer your question, then you can raise your question again now. Increasing the land, we are adopting a multithrone approach. We will make the best use of existing land, we also have to develop new land. So on maximizing the use of existing plots. Please, this gentleman, Mr. Chair, please. Please, you are interrupting too much. You are obstructing his speech, you are not respecting. The permanent secretary. Please remain silent and let him speak. I want you to hold meetings in a fair manner. I'm now asking him to speak, if you keep on your sort of behavior, I'll have no choice but to call the meeting to an end. Well, you are not playing your role properly as the chairman of the meeting. Now, I'll now adjourn the meeting for ten minutes. Well, teach him how he should answer questions. Shouldn't government officials learn to be humble in their answers? They are so arrogant all the time, there's no way we can continue with the meeting. Well, I'll declare the meeting adjourned for ten minutes. Yes, I think we can't continue with the meeting.